I call this meeting to order. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Splendoria.
Present.
Mr. Shoner.
Present.
Mrs. Dai.
Here.
We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow public comments on resolutions only. Our board regulations allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes. There will be a countdown timer, and at the end of the three minutes, the microphone will be shut off and the speaker will be interrupted. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. This portion of the meeting is meant to hear public comment, not to have a dialogue between the board and the person speaking. The board asks the members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students, district employees, and members of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. The public is reminded that students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. All statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you will be asked to leave the meeting. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to speak to identify themselves by name, address, and group affiliation, if applicable, every time you address the board, and to limit their comments to items on the agenda. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. Nobody signed up, and so we're going to move on to committee reports. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello. How's everybody doing this evening?
Fantastic.
That's awesome. Glad to hear it. Does anybody have any committee reports?
I don't have any committee reports, but I would just like to say, happy teacher appreciation, teacher and staff appreciation.
Absolutely.
To everybody in the district, and how cute it was that everything was on the lawn.
Yes, they're being well celebrated.
What they have, the FSA has provided the Java truck, I think it was, yesterday. And very nicely done.
Absolutely.
And thank you, teachers, staff, and everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, definitely.
I would also just like to say that went through the car wash the other day for the high school, and they did a great job. Of course, now my car's yellow again because of the pollen, but they did, they really did it, they did a great job, and they seemed like they were having a lot of fun.
And they really were quite, quite busy, which was really nice for the, you know, for the weather.
They had good weather, right?
Yeah, they had great weather, and it was great because I think they were saying that they raised a lot of money to help Music Matters, which is really important.
Great.
Yes.
Wonderful. And the middle school had a fundraiser not too long ago. Did you, were you able to attend that, Mr. DeChara? Not putting you on the spot, but.
The middle school?
The bingo?
I did not.
Okay, all right, well.
But I know they, they do, the middle school, and we'll find out, I think we have a meeting, excuse me, next week with the, I'll get the confirmation, but there, it's a, they keep calling it a pocketbook, and my mom always told me that that's.
It's a purse.
It's a purse.
Right.
But yeah, it's like a Louis, an Yves Saint Laurent, and I forget who, a Fendi, Fendi I had my eye on. So yeah, nice raffle for one. Whoever wins picks whatever bag they want, and that's coming up soon.
Very nice.
And I think also both elementaries are doing, one is doing a walk or a run.
Yes.
I think once we have the, you know, the FSA meetings, we'll be able to report a little bit more on that and talk about it.
Yes, and they're.
All right. They're coming up next week.
To be continued.
Great.
So yeah, I'll have something to report on at our next meeting.
All right, so moving on then, we have two board presentations. We have one board presentation.
If we're going to post that for next week.
Gotcha. So the one we're having this evening is the budget hearing? All right. I know we're all moving for that?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
[inaudible]
Almost ready.
[inaudible]
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 Attend a program that we have in the high school. And we also have a Glen Ridge student that attends a program in the middle school. Our aftercare program, you can't only see it here, but we have anticipated revenue for beforecare and aftercare. In the past, we've used a Moncler YMCA, but next year, we're going to be using a different company. We're currently, myself and superintendent, we're meeting with some companies. We have some proposals, so probably at the next board meeting, we'll probably have something to, for board approval. Next, we have some interest income. This is just the interest that we receive from our banks for the funds that we have there. Miscellaneous income is basically just some E-rate funding that we get from the government and some prior year refunds and any other income that's not anticipated. Rental of our fields is just anticipated for when either Danzer Seidel or somebody uses our field. We have somebody that uses our soccer field, so they give us money for that. Transportation, these are funds that we receive from parents that have students that ride our buses that are not eligible to receive free busing. Extraordinary aid, these are funds that we receive from the state for special education students that go out of district. And you can't see, but also prior year encumbrances make up some revenue in the 2021 budget. This here shows our state aid. As I mentioned before, our state aid has increased 15, a little over 15% from previous year, and it makes up about four and a half percent of our operating revenue. We also have a withdrawal from maintenance reserve that will be going into budget, and this can only be used on ordinary maintenance. So the operating revenue is increasing by $129,000 or 0.39%. This is our total operating expenditures. Obviously, our expenditures must match our revenues. And then here are just some more details here. This is for our instructional programs, our regular programs here. They include all of our salaries for our regular instruction teachers in grades K to 12. It also includes any software expenses, copier leases, copier charges, supplies at every level. It's here, and any textbooks is also included here. Basic skills include supplies and salaries for both basic skills and ESL. Media services, if you remember in a previous presentation, you can see that this amount is decreasing a lot from last year to, or the current year to next year's proposed budget. This is because we will be eliminating the media specialists in the high schools, South End and North End. We have instructional staff training. This includes a percentage of some district supervisors and also any curriculum writing and software costs, evaluation software that we use in the district. So this instructional part of the budget is going down by that little, about $350,000. But the majority of that is because of the media specialists that are going to be used in other areas of the budget. Our special ed budget. The instruction part includes all salaries and supplies for our special ed programs, for the LLD program, our resource room, and our preschool disability program. Out of district tuition is for the placement of 32 special ed students that we have that are placed outside of our school district. And some of this tuition money is supplemented by our IDA grant. Related and extraordinary services, this is any in-house speech or occupational therapy or an interventionist or any ABA services. That's included in this part of the budget. And child study team includes the salaries of those individuals and also supplies in professional development. Employee benefits, here we have our social security. This is the payments that we make to the state for our non-certified staff, such as secretaries and custodians. Retirement contributions, that's also a payment that we make to the state for non-certified employees. Workers' comp, this is the premium that we pay for all of our employees to be covered for workers' comp insurance. Tuition reimbursement, this is just as per the union contracts. And some other contractual obligations. This is also some other, some custodial uniforms, some sick day payouts, and some COBRA administration that we pay out. And the big one here is health benefits. Can't really see it here, but our health benefits for next year is projected to be $5.7 million. We are part of the school employees' health benefit program, so that's run by the state. But our prescription and dental coverage is with a private carrier. All right, support services, this is broken into several categories here. We have our attendance and health services. These is all the nursing salaries for everybody in district and also our school physician. Guidance, here you see a larger increase. Some of the money that was taken from our, saved from our, the media specialist is going here into a guidance. So for next year, we will have a guidance council will be in every building. And also, and here is a SAC that we have in the high school, and also a coordinator of mental health is included in this budget. Then the next few lines are our administrative lines. So we have our general administration is all anything in superintendent's office and business office. School administration is everything that's in the school offices for principals, vice principals, directors, and secretaries. Central services is everything in the business office, I said that in there before, and also the technology department supplies are in there. To continue, our transportation, this number is going up for next year. That's mainly due because of, for this year with COVID, we haven't transported all of our students. We have had some that in out-of-district placements that haven't been going. So we've saved some of those transportation costs, so that budget was reduced this year. And it'll be, next year is assuming everything will be under normal operation. So that includes all the routes for special ed and also for regular ed students also. Athletics, this includes all the coaching salaries and also our trainer and supplies for them, uniforms and so forth. And co-curricular, these are all the advisors and clubs that are in all of the schools. Next is our operations and maintenance budget. This includes all the salaries, supplies, and services that are needed to maintain all the buildings. Also includes the gas and electric charges for the buildings and also liability insurance. And the, there's a decrease here. That's mainly due because in the current year, we had to increase our expenses for PPE and any expenses related to COVID. And security, we have here just some annual expenses that are, such as cell phones, panic buttons, and supplies. And capital, this is just includes a debt service assessment that is made upon us by the state. So this slide, actually, this slide came up good. This slide is just a, it shows a, how the budget is broken into fixed costs and discretionary costs. Now, we have our total operating budget, if you remember, was just under $33 million. So the fixed costs, I like to break it into categories. Personnel category, student, and other categories, such as professional services and all that. So in the personnel, this includes all the salaries, benefits, makes up pretty much the majority of the budget or 77.2% of the budget. Student expenses is anything related to expenditures for students, such as out-of-district tuition, transportation, and any evaluations. That's a little over 14%. The other costs, this is our energy costs and software expenses, legal expenses, our order expenses. That's all factored into here, so that amounts to 3.4% of the budget. So if you add everything up, that's a little over $31 million or just under 95% of the budget is fixed cost. So that means that the remaining 5% we have are discretionary costs. So it just shows how much of the budget is a fix whenever we're, you know, we have to look at reducing expenses. This is where we don't have, we don't have a big pot to reduce them in. This slide here just shows the new items in the budget for next year. So we have a few personnel items. Our curriculum supervisors currently, they are 10 months for next year's budget. They will be 12 months, and they will cover grades pre-K to five and grade six to 12 for those two positions. We have a reading specialist that will be used at the elementary level. We'll have an additional guidance counselor will be placed at the high school. So now, as I said before, we'll have one in every school. And the high school will also have a coordinator of mental health that will be working with all the guidance counselors in all the schools. We also have a summer step-up program that's going to be new for next year, which will be helping students over the summer. And as in past years, we'll be getting new Chromebooks. This year, we're adding another level to it, so grades K, five, and nine will be getting new Chromebooks. So this means that we'll now be a one-to-one district. The last couple of years, we were just one-to-one for grades five to 12, so now we'll be one-to-one for the entire district. And we'll also be getting a point-of-sale system for our cafeteria. So this, this means that we won't be exchanging any money. So parents will be able to put money on a card. It'll be an online account. You could transfer money in by your bank account or by credit card. And the students will have the card, and then as they go to lunch every day, they just present the card and it'll deduct the meal that they get from the card. So it'll speed up time, a lot of districts are using it. And the parents will also be able to track the purchase that their children make. So you'll see, see what they're ordering, if they're, you know, getting the meal or if they're just ordering, you know, trips or whatever. And lastly, athletics, winter track is currently being run as a club. It has been like that for a while. Next year, it will be a varsity sport, and we'll also be getting a new golf program for next year. So this last slide just talks about the tax impact for the operating budget for the average home. The increase is $98.70. The average assessed house is $470,900. So that's what, for the average home is $98.70. And this comes to $8.23 per month, that $1.90 per week or 27 cents a day. And the estimated school tax rate is increasing by 1.51%. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. DeVita. We appreciate the update. Another budget year come and gone as far as preparations. I thank Mr. Shoner, who was on the finance committee with me, and obviously to Mr. Grosso, who was new to the committee, and Mr. DeVita for obviously always being prepared and getting us the data that we needed, and we appreciate it. Budget season is never easy. There are things, you know, that are just beyond our control in terms of costs that just increase, you know, health insurance, things like that. And so we try very hard to manage with what we have, you know, to increase programs where we can and to move the district forward. And in some years, it's a little more challenging than others. So, but I am happy that we're able to move forward with some steps. We have some new classes, we have some new sports, so I think that's a good thing. So, thank you. Until next year.
Thank you guys for working very hard. I mean, I don't know how you do it.
Best committee on the board.
Oh, my, yeah, no, thank you. You guys can have it, but no, seriously, I know how much effort goes into this. And I'm, every year, I'm amazed at the budget cuts that we face and how you guys come up with ways to get, still get more for our students. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
The big goal this year, obviously, with the superintendent was to get the coordinator of mental health, also the guidance counselors in every building, and really to facilitate that on a level that, because we know next year it will be a challenge, you know, to have people in the building for the kids.
Absolutely. All right, we're going to move on the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 and B2?
So moved.
Second. B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of April 20th, 2021. B2 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item accounts have encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Spandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B3 through B11?
So moved.
Second.
B3, resolve that the final budget numbers listed below are adopted for the 21-22 school year. B4 is a motion to approve the setting, a motion to approve setting the travel maximum for the 21-22 school year. B5 is a motion to approve submission of the Coronavirus Response and Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021 Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund with the following allocations. B6 is a motion to approve the quote from CDW-G for the purchase of Chromebooks through the Coronavirus Response and Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021 Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund in the amount listed. B7 is a motion to approve the quote from SHI International Corp. for the purchase of wireless access points through the Coronavirus Response and Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021 Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund in the amount listed. B8 is a motion to approve the quote from Pay Schools for the purchase of a point-of-sale system through the Coronavirus Response and Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021 Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund in the amount listed. B9 is a motion to approve Zenith Construction Services, Inc., final payment application number five in the amount listed. B10 is a motion to approve the generous donations valued at $130 for lawn signs for the high school MMS South End and North End from Ms. Rizzo. And B11 is a motion to approve the submission of the school security grant through the securing, through the Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act in the amount listed. Any discussion?
I just wanted to, I know we all feel the same way, thank Mrs. Rizzo for Card My Yard Cedar Grove, really for stepping up and really going out of her way to highlight what we all feel about appreciations of our teachers and staff and everything that they've done throughout this past year.
Absolutely.
Yes, I want to just build on that. Mrs. Rizzo had two students go through the system.
Yes.
Go through the school system, and it's very nice to see what she did to give back and very thankful for her. Thank you. Card My Yard.
It really looks great. I mean, it's a wonderful surprise. I had numerous teachers contact me to say how surprised they were and how they loved it.
Yeah, it looks great. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Spandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S13?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve employment for the following substitute custodian. S2 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures. S3 is a motion to retroactively approve the following substitute custodian. S4 is a motion to accept the resignation of Katie Hanlon, district athletic trainer. S5 is a motion to approve the following teaching personnel for the extended school year program 2021. S6 is a motion to approve the following paraprofessional personnel for extended school year 2021. S7 is a motion to rescind S13, John Simone, as high school set designer musical at the Stipe listed. S8 is a motion to retroactively approve Ryan Corrisero, summer weight room advisor. S9 is a motion to retroactively approve Ann Ratty to provide supplemental assistance. S10 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S11 is a motion to approve the following job descriptions for the 2021 school year. S12 is a motion to approve the following 10-month to 12-month employee positions for the following. And S13 is a motion to approve Suzanne Marzoka, memorial middle school math teacher maternity leave replacement at the rate listed. Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank Katie for the trainer, because my children are, still have her, and she has been fantastic with my son who graduated over the years, really. She's been just amazing.
No, she's been great, and she's handed out more than one strip of Katie tape to my kids as well, so she's fantastic.
Yes, wishing her nothing but the best.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Spandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S14?
So moved. Second.
S14 is a motion to approve the following employees to write curriculum. Any discussion?
No.
No. Other than, once again, Mr. Van, Van de Hoop was here last week. Fantastic, very excited about this new program that he wants to implement and put in. He's going to be fantastic, and I'm looking forward to seeing what he actually does.
I'm with you, Dave, I agree. I was telling Laura the other night, I was like, I want to take this class.
Yes, it's actually right on point.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Spandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S15?
So moved.
Second.
S15 is a motion to approve the following contract for a special education student as recommended by the Director of Special Services. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Spandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. At this time, the Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Cedar Grove Public Schools. In this section, we allow public comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allot 40 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes. There will be a countdown timer, and at the end of the three minutes, the microphone will be shut off and the speaker will be interrupted. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. This portion of the meeting is meant to hear public comment, not to have a dialogue between the board and the person speaking. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students, district employees, and members of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. The public is reminded that students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of its, of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. As I stated earlier, all comments will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. The board reminds those individuals who take the opportunity to speak to identify themselves by name, address, and group affiliation, if applicable, every time you address the board, and to limit their comments to items directly related to the operation of the school district. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda, and I have a sign-up list, so I'm going to go in order. And the first person I have on the list is Bill Scanlon.
Bill Scanlon, 32, Bruce Court, Cedar Grove. As the coach of the girls' basketball team, I employed film as a tool in demonstrating where we had done things well in areas where we needed improvement. And I always said to the girls, the film does not lie. Same holds true about the Board of Education meetings. The film does not lie. As was just done prior to the public portion of the meeting, the board president reads the rules for speaking, one being that you are allowed no more than three minutes to speak. The problem with the three-minute rule is that it is applied inconsistently. At the April 20th board meeting, I was afforded just over two minutes of speaking time and a total of three minutes at the podium. Another speaker was told mid-sentence that her time was up. And yet, both the mayor and the Cedar Grove Education Association president were given over five minutes of speaking time. Additionally, at the March 16th meeting, the Cedar Grove Education Association president was given over 10 minutes of speaking time. This uneven application of the three-minute rule to censor certain comments while allowing other more favorable comments to exceed the three minutes is inappropriate and discriminatory. It is a misuse of the process and, in my opinion, unethical. At the April 20th board meeting, I asked who polices the board in regard to the New Jersey School Boards Association's Code of Ethics for School Board Members, and I was told that the board is self-policing. Well, it's time to start the process.
Thank you for your comment. Next, I have Dawn Dora.
Do I get an remaining minute and a half? Just kidding. Good evening. My name is Dawn Dora, and I reside at 56 Union Street in Cedar Grove. My questions tonight are regarding addressing learning loss. So I've heard some chatter, and I got a little more information tonight regarding the step-up program that's being afforded, that I understand, to the elementary schools. So my question is, can you explain and talk a little bit about what that program is and who's going to be afforded the opportunity to participate in that? That's my first question. And then my second question is, I have not heard anything with a similar program that's going to be afforded to the middle school students. I would imagine that there probably is learning loss that has occurred in the middle school, so I would like you to address what types of programs are being discussed or possibly implemented at the middle school level that will address learning loss. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for that question. So the summer step-up program, this is a program that is afforded to our general education students as the ESY program is afforded to our special education students. When I, I kind of talked about this a little bit a couple of meetings ago, but really what happens in the summer step-up program is that kindergarten is going to first grade, first grade going to second, second going to third, and third going to fourth, would be identified through multiple measures as a student that would qualify under the criteria for ELA and for math. On May 14th, the families of the students who would qualify under those multiple measures would be notified, and they would have to return a, an acceptance by June. And I, I, I'm at a loss for at that moment. I can look at my computer and give you that date. From that point, the students, that program would run from June 28th until the end of July, Mondays through Fridays, 8:30 to 11:30. And depending upon the students in each grade level or cohort, there would be a defined program based upon the needs of those students. So it's not necessarily individualized for each individual student, but depending upon those particular areas of support, that's how the program would be based upon. There will be a coordinator of that program along with around five to, four to five teachers, as well as a nurse. And that is how that summer step-up program would initially work, where the data from that would then also be shared in the coming school year, the 21-22 school year. So as far as the, as far as the middle school, and quite frankly, it's the high school as well. I mean, all of our students are going to have some learning loss. One of the things that we were focusing on for the immediate future right now for the summer was specifically for our elementary students based on the foundational pieces that they're going to need. Because if we look at this academically, that does impact middle to high school. So what we've done, what we're looking at at the middle school are not necessarily something for the summer, but how can we have a recovery program throughout the course of next year? And how will that be included in an updated schedule? And I often talked about how the scheduling, as we move into next year, would not necessarily be something of a traditional schedule, which is what we've known of in the past. It would incorporate interventions such as, you know, response to intervention and other types of support services that would be utilized for our general education students. But our focus was primarily on the elementary level based on the needs as it moves forward and how it's impacted on the upper levels.
So can I just ask a question for clarification? So you're saying that the plan, or we're in the early stages of discussing addressing learning loss or regression, I'm assuming using our ESER funds for September for the middle school? We are, it's going to be incorporated in the daily schedule? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
We're definitely discussing, looking at how we can, how we can afford the students that are at.
Can you stop the clock, please? Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Because I have another question.
It was, it's, it's, so what I was saying was, it's based on how we could incorporate supportive services throughout the course of the school year, aside from the summer. One of the things we're a little concerned about as we move into the summer, and we've seen this in some of the other districts, people participating and taking advantage of that. Our goal is that when we identify the students at the elementary level, our hope is that we take, we have a hundred percent engagement in that, but we are also realistic that people do have vacations and plans, and that is their right, because it is a summer, to engage their children however they would like, but we did want to provide that support at the elementary level.
Now, that will only be open to general ed students?
That's correct. The summer Step Up will be open to only general ed students.
Okay, so I don't have any students in the, in the elementary schools, but I'm an advocate of special ed.
I know, yep.
As you know. So my question regarding that is, then what happens to the students that are identified as special education but do not qualify for the extended school year? Will they not be afforded the same opportunity as the other general ed students to participate in this program? Because I would assume the majority of them would probably meet criteria.
Right, absolutely. We want to, I, so what we've tried to do, in our anticipation, when we look at the multiple measures of what is going to determine the child's involvement into the summer Step Up program, we really want to have a narrow focus. We, we understand that when you look at the range of students, you have students that are just on the cusp of, of meeting that proficient mark, if you'd want to call it that, or a student that is in need of some major supports. Really what we want to focus on are those, are those areas of math and language arts, and where do they fall, and the numbers of where they fall, and the number of students. And it is also something that we want to financially look and see that how we're able to support our staff, our staff and our students as well, because that is all part of the, of a process of creating a programming as well. But we do want to look at that, that area where we have students that would, I guess you would say the students that are kind of on that, on that cusp level, where we can kind of push them over, where we can kind of, where we can help them move into that proficient mark, where they would have the tools needed to be successful moving forward. But just to comment on your, your, your comment of all students, that is the purpose of us collaborating together with our special, our special education director, as well as our building principals, on ways to provide supports within the school during the year. The reality of it all is, is, and I think everybody in education understands this, and parents understand this, is that recovery is going to be a main priority, and how are we going to do that, and what programming are we going to provide? One of the things that we are, we focused on here, and we're very close to coming up with a candidate to present to the Board for approval, would be a reading specialist, somebody that can really identify students, provide them with the needs, and this is, this is all students that we want, we really would like to help, not just a selective group, but also help to model for our staff, to help them be able to help their own students with current and effective ideas to address their students. So this is not going to, and you know this, because you are yourself an educator, this is not going to be a, this is not going to be an easy task, and it will be a heavy lift for all educators in all school districts. But our goal has been throughout the process, how are we going to do that? What are we going to do for the students? How are we going to involve parents into this process, and having everybody take ownership for that? So we're, that's what we're doing. We're in the process of looking at that, there's no easy one way of doing it. We know that as we move into the school, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, there will be an evolution of those ideas, and we will find that there'll be other ideas based off of our original one, that will be able to help our, our students and our staff move our students forward.
Thank you. Well, I look forward to the options that are going to be afforded to our students in the middle school next year, as a parent of a middle school, and I just want to leave the note that I am excited and look forward to the additions in the high school, specifically in the guidance department.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say one thing before you go. I also, I also would like to offer to you, if you, because we are partners, we're colleagues with each other, best practices are always shared, and I think that's how we grow as a community, so I'm more than welcome to listen to your ideas as well.
I would love to take you up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next person I have is Agnes Norman.
Good evening, my name is Agnes Norman, I live at twenty-eight Bargain Drive. I attended the last Board of Education meeting on April twentieth, and I was interrupted, so I'm here before you to finish my statement, in hopes of persuading you and the Board members to open Cedar Grove Schools for full-time instruction. At the last Board meeting, Mr. Canelle asked the parents to be patient, but we have been nothing but patient. As I stated previously, I have grave concerns for my kids and all the other kids in Cedar Grove that are continuing to have remote learning in the afternoon. Not only has this pandemic impacted our kids socially, emotionally, educationally, but also physically, I will email you and the Board members an article from the New York Times on the epidemic of myopia affecting the eyes of our children due to the screen time. I think this epidemic has done enough damage to our children. It is our responsibility now, as the community, to try to repair some of that damage and get back our kids, or get our kids back to school full-time. Although I appreciated your speech about the Cedar Grove teachers, my comment wasn't directed towards them. On the contrary, I believe that we have some outstanding educators in North End, and I would never want to diminish their efforts, but they are limited in how much they can do with remote learning because of their restrictions. I can only speak for North End, since I don't have kids in a middle school or high school, and I'm sure you will agree with me that North End and its teachers are amazing, but we need to build on that. Education is the fundamental building block for our children to be successful in contributing members of our community and teachers, community and society. Education is the most powerful tool we can offer them as parents, teachers, and administrators, but that cannot be done from behind a computer screen or home desk. We accomplish that by opening our schools and allowing our amazing teachers to do their job. Lastly, I don't want, I'm not here to fight you, I want to fight with you. So I stand here before you, asking you to help me by bringing my kids and all the other kids back to school full-time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next, I have Edith Fusco.
Good evening. Good evening. Edith Fusco, seventy-five Bordick Road. So I hope everyone's having a great evening. I, like many parents, were very grateful that the cohorts have been collapsed, and most children have been able to return to school. This is a positive move in the right direction, but naturally, we would love to see our children back to the pre-COVID, normal, full-day schedule with lunch included. I have searched high and low to see if I could find articles that link COVID outbreaks to full-day in-person instruction. I also searched for articles linking COVID outbreaks to specifically to lunchrooms. I am happy to report that there is no evidence that links the two. The CDC website, when you read some of the comments, the CDC website states, quote, "In-person learning in schools has not been associated with community transmission," unquote. Sarah Bode, who is a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics Council on School Health, states, quote, "The goal has to be, has to be to get kids back to an in-person learning. There has been a mounting body of evidence over the past year of schools being able to put mitigation strategies into place and not seeing much student-to-student spread. It can be done, and it can be done effectively," unquote. A recent statement from the Scientific American website suggests that, quote, "The benefits of having kids in school strongly outweighs the risks, especially now that most teachers have been vaccinated," unquote. Year-to-date, most, if not all, Cedar Grove teachers have been vaccinated. The local news channels have announced that Governor Murphy is planning to lift restrictions and increase indoor facilities to full capacity in the coming weeks. Bars and even food buffets will be open, and indoor venues of a thousand people plus will have increased capacity. Everything is opening fully before our schools, the places that pose a low transmission of COVID, and the places that our children need the most. Given all of the information that I just shared, how likely is it for us to see a full-day in-person instruction day with a lunch setting for all students in the Cedar Grove District for the remaining twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty, the twenty, twenty-one school year? And my second part to that is, if the lunch aids is the issue, or are the issue, how can we work as a community to help? Can parents volunteer? What can we do to help bring our kids back full-time? That's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that question. I will be more than happy to kind of walk you through the obstacles that hold us back from doing that. I believe there's probably around, after, I think there's probably around thirty days left in the school year, academics days in the school year, and part of those are half-days as we, as we move towards June. We, you know, you've, you've heard me stand, you know, sit up here and talk about this, but one of the things we've discussed as a team here in Cedar Grove about moving back to a full day. If we're going to move back to a full day, we want to be, it's, it's you came here, right? Okay. One of the things that, when we do move our students back to a full-day program, we want to be able to do it right. I know that there are several of our partners and our other school districts that are in the process of attempting to do it, they have not necessarily, well, they are, there are, there are several that have, but they have very different circumstances, there we go, different circumstances, and different facilities. So I will walk you through just something very briefly, which is one of the major obstacles. We, in the past several weeks, have sat down with each other as a team and talked about, an administrative team, and talked about how efficiently and sustainably can we bring our students back to a full-day program? And when we looked at this, it does come down to two major factors. One major factor is staff, and the other major factor is, well, there's three actually, is space, capacity, and scheduling. So when, when you look at a guideline that has allowed students to return to a three-foot distance within a classroom, but it has students return to an eatery or cafeteria at a six-foot distance, basically what you're looking at is, if you had ten children in a classroom, you really only could have five people in that eating, eating area. And I'm just using that as a number, don't, that's not actual figures, those are, those are just examples. So ultimately, what you would have to do is, you would have to reschedule those children to meet the demands of the, the eating schedule. Well, when we look at it from an elementary level, that poses a major, major difficulty and a problem, based on the fact that our, the areas that we, we delegate as an eatery would be the gymnasium. And therefore, the schedule that the students are currently working on would have to be, number one, disrupted for the remaining thirty days. We would, we would have to look at, how could we contractually provide a solid, sustainable teaching schedule for, for the teachers? And would we have enough people to cover those areas during that time? When we look at the middle school, the middle school was never built with the intention of the, of this type of, well, actually, no school was built with the intention of doing what we're doing, but the middle school, as you heard Mr. Decourt speak several meetings ago about the capacity, we are very fortunate that we were able to bring our students back at a three-foot distance this week, yesterday, actually, today's Tuesday, right, today? So eating would be another difficulty. At the high school, we look at it, and there's several options, which makes it a little bit easier, where we look at the ability for, for a cohort of our students to be able to go have an open campus lunch. But that's something that has to be worked out with the police department, and I've already had a conversation, a brief conversation with Chief Sarasa about the ability to do that, because that means a larger load of people would be moving into our downtown area, that would include having crossing guards, being able to participate in the safety aspect of it all, and is that, is that available to us right now at this particular time, with basically thirty days left in, in our academic year? So when we look at them, we weigh those options, one of the things that we've talked about, and you will see within the next, within this month, the middle school and the high school will be piloting during the school day, and perhaps after, we're not quite sure yet, on how can we sustain that, and what would that look like in each of the individual schools, and what would that capacity look like? You know, one of the other things we have to look at as well is that when we offer a food service to the students, that we utilize Pomptonian, and one of the things that you've noticed tonight that we, that the Board has passed, is a point-of-service, service, where there would be no exchange of, of cash, it would all be a touchless transaction, and there would be the ability to not look at a, even though Governor Murphy has sanctioned a buffet service for the, for restaurants, that's not necessarily what our food service would look towards doing. Mr. DeVita and I were on a call, I guess it was several weeks ago, with our food service, with other people throughout this, with other districts throughout the state, and we've looked towards Florida, who has, who has done this, but they've had some interesting configurations on how they would provide those services. They're also, we're also looking at regional districts that are much, much larger than ours, and so there are certain things that they're capable of doing that we, that we wouldn't necessarily look at doing at, at a local level. So there's all these little factors that go into it. My goal, our goal as, as, as a governing body for Cedar Grove Public Schools, is that when we come back in September, we want to make sure we do this right. We do not want to do any knee-jerk reactions, we do not want to rush through something because others want us to do that. We want to get it right for our children, we want to get it right for your children, and we want to make sure when we do this, it is in the most productive, safe, and sustainable way that we could possibly do this for them. So these are all the different parameters that we're taking into consideration, and just to kind of give you an idea, as a person who has created a master schedule for a school, I've created master schedules for a middle school of over eight hundred, a elementary school with six hundred and fifty, and I've worked in collaboration of a high school with almost close to twenty, two-hundred students. Scheduling is an art form. It takes a lot of intuition, time, calculations, and it can't be, a switch cannot be flipped on a moment's notice, because all, there's a lot of different parameters that are put into place. And just to give you that idea, when the, when the governor announced the, or rather, when the, when the Cali rating came down to three feet, had a conversation with Mr. Bayer here at the high school, and one of the things we talked about was, based on that, what, how is that going to change daily operation for this building? And one of the biggest pieces that was going to change was the movement of going back to a regular classroom compared to being taught in a room like this, or being taught in a cafeteria, or an, more of an open space. So those are all the pieces where, there's a lot of things that we've done throughout this entire process that was kind of on the fly, because we've had to, and based on a crisis situation, a lot of heads worked together to, to get that done, and I am so proud of the, of the, of the administrators and the staff for being flexible to do that, and they've done it. So when I look at the last thirty days or so, and I want to see how things can work, we do want to, in between that time period, pilot something to see, is this a possibility, and can we do this the right way for September? I think a very foolish thing to do would be to, to say that we're going to do something, not necessarily test it out, and then come September, say, uh-oh, we should have done that, now we've got to flip the switch. And there are several districts, several around us, that have done that over and over and over again this year. We have not. We have been consistent since September, and we continue to be consistent. So I just wanted to give you a little insight as, as all the working parts of, of transitioning over to that. We are very excited to do that, we want nothing more than to bring our, our kids back to a full day. We want nothing more than to bring our, our kids back to a full day. We see how they're responding to moving back to, we do, the reduction of cohorts, and we see how excited they are to be socializing and to be learning in this environment. This is the reason why we got into this profession, we wanted the best for children. We know that what was going on this year by no means would have ever been the best for children, but it was something that we were doing that we felt was the best, and we were doing our best while that was happening. So I appreciate your, your comments, and I'm always open to suggestions. I know a lot of, I know we've had conversations and we've suggested things, and if we could do it, we can do it. If we can't, we can't. And I think that, I think that's how we would want to move forward. But hopefully, next, next September, when we sit here and we're looking at each other, we don't have to talk about this anymore, that this is something that we all feel comfortable with, and that we feel that our, our children and our students here in this district are taking advantage of the most that they can. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, I have Patricia Montana.
Patricia Montana, 5 M Recor, Cedar Grove. So now that cohorts have been combined, will we see a change in the policy regarding the use of desks and lockers? Specifically at the elementary schools, will children be allowed to leave their materials at their desk overnight? And at the middle school and high school, will lockers be reopened? We know it's very burdensome to carry materials back and forth, plus the risk of Chromebook damage is quite high when it's piled in with heavy tests and other materials. We also know from the CDC's updated guidance at the beginning of April, transmission on surfaces is extremely low, generally less than 1 in 10,000. So will a district update its policy on desks and locker use?
If you have more, I'll, I'll answer your questions at the end.
Okay, great. So number two, can you shed some light on whether the playgrounds at South End and North End are open and available for students to use during the school day? Should administrators and teachers wish to allow it? Number three, can you explain whether the district intends to continue to require students to quarantine when returning from travel? And the reason I ask this question is because at this time, New Jersey, and I quote, "is not mandating quarantine for unvaccinated individuals returning from travel." While the state expects individuals to follow the recommendations to self-quarantine, it is, in fact, entirely voluntary. So will the district consider changing its position on this to strictly follow the governor's health guidance? And then lastly, I appreciated the graphic outlining the plan for returning to in-person next academic year. Could you explain further the Plan B, traditional blend? Some parents are concerned that alternative scheduling is just a fancy way of reinstating cohorts for next year. I'm assuming that's not the case, that under both Plan A and Plan B, students would be attending every day, full day, every week with lunch. But can you explain that plan further, speak to those concerns, and address how lunch will be handled?
Is that all? Okay. Okay. So the materials going home, we have, we have not made any plans for this particular moment in time to leave materials or utilize lockers. Lockers in general are something that are very, very close to the other students, and this is not something that we have looked to do, moving, moving towards the rest of the year. This is something we will have conversations about and discussions about, but this is not something that's necessarily on the plate right now for a change currently. As far as the Chromebook piece of it all, I do want to share with you that as we move forward in, in the district, we, as Mr. DeVita had shared tonight, we are, we will truly be a one-to-one district. And our goal as educators is that that will now become a, one of our primary tools to utilize with our students. That doesn't mean that we would use them in the capacity that we've used in this year, where we've, where we've had the Google Meets or Zooms or platforms such as that, although that could be used for certain things. But there's a lot of collaborative tools that have been brought to the surface and have been encouraged by our staff to utilize, and our students to be able to collaborate on a much different level than they ever have before, which is quite frankly, a 21st century skill that we as adults utilize in our everyday, in our everyday professional life. So that is something that we do look at, that they would be utilizing, bringing to school, bringing, coming, going, going home with them, because it will be a primary tool. One of the beautiful things about this is that we do definitely have a warranty service on those, on the Chromebooks, and we definitely anticipate the, the use of that, because children are children, and even as adults, we make mistakes and we break keys and we spill things on those devices. But we are prepared for the repairs and our, we have an excellent IT department who was working feverishly through this whole entire process to help our kids stay on, on task. So that is something, that's a tool that we would want to continue to use, and much more than we've ever used prior to 2020. Playground use, we are still continuing the playground use. This is based on your, your comment, this is something we can have a conversation about and see where we are going to go with that. And, you know, you're right, when we looked at what the CDC said about surfaces, they did come out with, I would not say new, but updated guidelines about surfaces. So this is something that we can definitely bring back and have a conversation about and see where we would go with that moving forward. Student travel use and quarantine, we will still continue to keep that student travel quarantine in place. When the governor came out and he reduced the quarantine for the state of New Jersey, we as a school district and as, actually, the school guidance from our local health department continued to utilize the quarantining. We've reduced the time for our employees, as well as those who are vaccinated or those who had COVID. But we could continue that in the realm for our students, because we do have a lot of students that are traveling out of the state, and especially this time of year when we have a lot of our high school students visiting colleges there, our colleges that are accepting open campus visits. So we would, we would want to just be cautious with that, because we still daily have cases within our school system that are from students, not necessarily from our staff. But we do have both, so we do want to be cautious about that. And, oh, the graphic. So the graphic shared a traditional and a traditional blend. And when the time, when the time is right for us to share out those plans, for a comprehensive plan, I should say, to the public, we will definitely be doing that. And we'll, we'll be providing a, same way that we provided a reopening plan, we will provide that in that same circumstance and service to, to our families and the public. When we look at alternative scheduling, that does not necessarily, that does not mean cohorts. What that means is, is that when you look at a traditional schedule that we may have been used to, and this is kind of answering the first question about recovery, you cannot necessarily do things the way that we used to do them. And that is purely on the fact that we need to tend to the needs of our children and where they currently are. So would that mean adjusting lengths of periods, or decreasing and adding something else into the mix? Does that mean providing support, support periods or programs within that? That speaks to the point of lunch, where we are definitely, and I've shared this before, we are definitely heavily looking at the opportunity for families to, if they can, and we know that, we know that there are a lot of families that cannot, but if they wanted to take their children home for, for lunch, very similar to what I did when I was in elementary school, they would have that opportunity. We look at, we're exploring the idea of opening up an open campus for our, our high school students to, it's currently being offered to our seniors, could it be offered to other levels? And how would that impact our community? How would that impact our safety parameters? And, and what I mean by that is how would that affect our, our local police, and how would they be able to help support that, that safety? So it encompasses all those pieces, very similar to what we just talked about just before, about when we, when we talked about going back full-time, those are the pieces of, of the puzzle. But that does, but I, I never stated in there that we would go back to cohorts. It would be creative scheduling. And quite frankly, quite honestly, being somebody that has scheduled for a very long time, schedules look different year-to-year, to begin with, and they should. You should never really have a same schedule. When, when we look at the high school, we have a double-rotating drop, but things can change within there. Courses and, and support services can be offered in a whole bunch of different ways based on what, what children need. So that, when I talk about that, excuse me, when I talk about that, that's what that means. It means looking at the needs of the children, how do you alter those schedules, and then how do you provide lunch for, for children? So that's, that's really where that all comes from.
Okay, I just have one, one follow-up. So thank you for considering looking at the playgrounds again. And I would just urge the district to look at the policy of bringing books back and forth. I understand the Chromebook. My point wasn't that Chromebooks shouldn't go back and forth. It's just, you know, my fourth grader, for example, his backpack weighs about 35 pounds because he's bringing all of his textbooks back and forth each day. Now that they're in the classes and at the elementary school level, they're not moving between classes, can they store their books and materials back in their classroom desks? Particularly what we know now about surface transmission being relatively low. So I would just ask, as you're reconsidering the use of the playgrounds, that you also look closely at that policy, because it is very fluid, as I know the district has said before, and so a lot of these, you know, rules and policies should be fluidly changing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, by the way, before you go any further, I just do want to say to your question in the very beginning, the, the deadline for parents whose children qualify for the summer step-up program would be June 4th. It, it will come, for those who are eligible, it will come out to, in the, in the communications. I just wanted to share with you, because I know I said June, but I just didn't know the date, I looked it up.
Okay, I closed that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings, the next one will be May 19th, same place, same time. And then the one following that will be June 15th, same place, same time. Anybody else have anything to add?
No.
All right. Can I have, well, everybody has a good evening, and can I have a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Ms. Dye.
Yes. The meeting is ended. Everybody have a good night.